Okay.
Here.
Barbara, here, Jamie.
Here.
Yes, guys.
Here.
In here.
Here.
First item is the approval of the agenda. Move to approve. But I guess Jane, Brian, you have the party manager. And you've been ready to vote. As approved, which means consent agenda, any item may be removed for consideration. I'm with Barbara's request to do it. I will need to hear your full consent or your experience. So the motion can be taken since agenda minus only.
Move to approve.
Second. Andy, see. You know, especially how to vote. That's approved, which takes us to item D. Move to approve. Second, Jane, Brian. You know, especially how to vote.
You'll do first, but.
Okay.
Brian, you have to.
Aye.
Um, Daniel, and.
First, James, Kim, and.
Aye.
Steve, guys.
Aye.
In here. I'm Barbara, this is thing.
And that is approved, takes us to public forum. Time to decide for comments on the public on topic of speed business. We'll build an agenda on the agenda and actually be taking. For anyone here to speak in the public forum. And now we'll quote the public forum, meeting the old business A. For the week number ten, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. For the reason of proving that it's a big thing considering Nevada. I would think that our company for power was taking. To approve. But you're part. You know, it's one of the two votes. Approved. Takes us to B, your change order number two for field house. I mean, B L L C and the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred. If you're anti-nine-four and you get some background.
Uh, there's a memo uh from Jeff Harris in there. And this too is kind of, but you know, um, this will come back. It'll be official payment order of paperwork later, but wanted to get it running. Make their approval for it. So I had a conversation with Steve today. We talked a little bit about the cost. I think we got that kind of hammered out. So um, this will be uh just some interior sheeting. Um, the fieldhouse around the west side, north, south side, east side. But this will go there. Cover some exposed metal frame in there. So we won't have things banging in on the inside of those exterior panels. Just kind of clean it up a little bit. Uh, make it look better. It'll also help with a little bit of scum as well. So, but I would be happy to run against. This is a not good scene for A. Don't think then big C.
Yeah, that's what we'll do. And uh, talking with Jeff Harris too, um, if you guys are good with moving ahead with that number. Um, then we'll look at it again with factors. See if we can break that number down a little bit. So, so that costs. But I think that costs, talking with Don on site, Sam, who is probably what he expected to be for cost as well.
So originally, uh, we're talking with. I mean.
And a lot of stuff, uh, state is kind of.
Yeah, pretty powerful.
Basically, it protects that more than the.
I'll move you to room, Brian.
Second.
Part. Any other questions? And then how to vote, Andy. Through. Takes us to C for change order number five, reclaiming stream improvement permanent act incorporated in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred. An odd statement.
Move to approve.
Brian. Steve. Through. Takes us to D for pay rate number seven for twenty twenty-three, screen improvement project permanent. Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand eleven dollars and forty-two.
Move to approve.
Second, Andy, Brian. You know, especially how to vote. As approved. Takes us to new business A. For the week number eleven, nineteen twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resorting declaring intent to provide economic development support for development project of one thousand five six three. The time live.
I will move to approve with one amendment. Under the arts developer. May by the whole though, that could be. Nevada. Three titles.
I'll second that. You want to move right in, second by Brian. He's been everything you've been here.
Um, you have to.
To cover it. Um, you said, you said, um. None have a these. That is approved. Which takes us to B, approved special price fee retail alcohol access. Other service area for more of the case like E V A. Camelot Theater Foundation. One one four fifty-five. For eight twenty-three.
Move to approve, second. Are they the only ones who request this? Talk so far for that. For that. Card outside of.
There'd only be one allowed to have the outside area.
So would make a seat is wanting to apply to serve alcohol that outside of the. Do with the ladder.
Kind of like a piece of hywuda, like you only have one license for the whole area. So people can go in and make a seat and do whatever, but pretty outside. And it was like, you don't really get out of that one thing.
They definitely have their own person. They have that type of license that I'm catching. They'd have to be in their license to, to the state. Oh, they're gonna allow that. So uh, Camelot Theater changed their parameters for the license to be more for to provide. Some of those, sorry. Yeah, I'm not. Yeah, I'm just curious. Look how that works. No. Okay, thank you.
So the actual, uh, only thing for. Yeah, I will get it.
So. We have to ask, agree, but we believe that the one outside of.
It looks like a fire. Yeah, I'm going to send you a.
Good luck. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Good luck. Should be fine then. Thanks for work on that to make our B T V good man. You know, there's. None have to vote. Okay. And approved. Would take us to report, writing the administrative.
Here's our ICMA professional development meeting standing next to your notice for all of the. Uh, venues and everything. So what that basically entails is speakers that are going to be coming in. Speakers that will be going to the most important choosing those. We have a large list, so hopefully we'll have a good selection next year, the following years, but. Just keeps growing because we keep seeing different speakers at these events. And we want to try to bring to Iowa for these specific events as well. Uh, talk for bio a little bit about their annexation process. We will be starting the whole process again very shortly. Hopefully, everyone will have all the documents ready to screen by the end of the week. Shouldn't be too difficult because we got majority of it all taken care of already with previous ones. But I'm pretty, pretty easy and straightforward. Also had our interesting entrance interview with the St. daughters. Last Friday, they are here this week working on things. So I don't think it said that they plan on getting it to us in December this year. Is that right? At our meeting with H R Green pertaining to the sponsored project and what steps we're going to be taking for that. Permitting process we are going to be doing, doing it uh. In sync with the core engineers permitting process as well. So we can do it in time, hopefully everything will align to the point where we didn't need the long enough. All the issues with that. At the public meeting on the twenty-second for D O T pertaining to the interchange. And questions on the fly over. And uh, Brendan and I also met with D O T pertaining to the rise in application. Decided that it probably was not beneficial to go after at first point due to the cost and lack of. Um, parameters that we need for that grant order to get successful. So um, I'll, we'll probably bring that up more for again, but by the time where we actually have more supportive product to go after. Now, they draw green as well for C I P. We wanted to get all that taken care of and get new roads and all, all of that planned out. So we can start bidding process in December, January, hopefully for um, next year's projects. And then we also had a meeting with Consumers Energy and um. You know, I have a teletrack now on me, which is a camera system that is going to be installed. Just one of them, we're testing now. It's going to be installed on one of our cloud trucks. Uh, that way we can track it a little bit better and see a little bit more visuals. And then hopefully we can post that online. And you'll see the live news and. Um.
Uh, how's that fourteen project alive?
S fourteen project is going good. Uh, in the email, I believe I told you they're bringing out. I mean, this week they did actually get to it last week. They started the first layer of that asphalt. Um, I believe they were doing another layer today and they stopped over at E I. Feathered out our bridge to smooth that out. And they're holding that over there later on the weekend. Yeah, so that'll finally be cleared up after a long time and very frustrating finds.
Anything else for Jordan? My report is fairly short. Um, when you have any wanted to congratulate everyone involved in the night. I think it was a little really solid year. It was nice to see the truck pull and the parts that both were very successful and run. Pull out and playing developments are obviously the rodeo. I think was maybe better attended than ever. It was very, very busy, which is going to continue to grow and be forward from this year already. Um, there's also groups that's been working with me for some guidance, trying to do an event fair around the ninth. They had multiple issues with getting what they needed through the data alcohol beverage division. So they may need uh us to try to schedule a course, but we need to approve a five day course like them to. Um, I'll keep you in the loop once that we're done. Yeah, so I'll keep you in the loop once that's approved. By the state for us to be able to say that. Any other questions, I mean? Council reports.
Uh, I'll echo you on like your highway days also. Been the truck tractor for Friday. Uh, Friday, we probably felt better than I could, but probably close to two thousand there.
We bought, I bought. Think I had eighteen hundred wristbands when we ran out. Bye bye. I said, oh, we'll use them next year. So uh, we had my daughter and her, we're working one gate. Some other girl was working the other gate and we just started marking hands and marker. We just, I mean, it's unbelievable. We would have never guessed that it would. And we ran out of everything. We've been around the. The biggest, the association that does it could be involved, says the biggest one that I all we're probably never get that, never having. So made us feel pretty good, much old timers compliments on it. That's, that's the true compliment. And I've been doing it for twenty, thirty years and, and this is the best we've been to all years. Makes you feel pretty good. Lot of work, but great, you know, a whole weekend. I'll echo everybody, unbelievable of them. Where they have sold out. We oversold that. I don't know what we're going to do next year. Bigger, I don't know where we're going to put everybody. It's, but it was a good problem to have. I'm not complaining. It's pretty awful.
I don't, I also heard several compliments about Lincoln Memorial Days. I don't know. It's great that I have all these activities back there. Some of them were actually, a couple of them were former work members. And they're just really happy about all the events that are going on on the truck. Pull the beer garden over at sports ball. And you just thought it was really fun. And they said, this is one that is all about.
Concert Saturday night at the end, whole lot of weird things about like. I don't know, it'll get after every weekend all round. I haven't heard.
Cause I love that, like while the background was going on, also sport was out there.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
Yeah. I made you happy because Scott came down, rode around with me in the gator for a while before into that. Just. We had a lot of talk. We were kind of hoping we wouldn't hurt each other, but. I think the demographics were different, but we're normally good.
I think it just shows and you got a bunch of people and they all working together on this thing, especially whenever.
That will lead to this cost. Great weekend. We were really closely to rodeo, committing to all of this. All the leisure that they could have set up until the next day. Then they asked us midnight on Friday, will you leave your light towers and fence up? So we could use it for part of it. Sure, we can, that's where we'll do it Sunday. So yeah, we worked together good and worked awesome. I mean, like Steve said, we need everybody to work together and work great. Can ask for that for better weekend for us.
We did, we were working together. We might want to give a shout out to Amber, also Tanner Coder and maybe Rose for the flash mob. That they did, we're standing in off trip. Outside of our house, I don't know if you guys all saw, but the kids can see like every one of them. That was um, very, very special, like just to be that group of people that happened and you know, Sandy. And Steve come together, they all ended. Partnering up to you. A great thing to learn. Wanted to.
So we're talking about great community turnout. Everybody turn out for the Camelot concert this Friday, wicked day, Friday, September first. We can come and support the Camelot Theater. And then uh, we've got another big event the next Friday after that, right? Is that uh, that's our B T V. So. Everybody come downtown and support that as well.
Play more.
Yeah. Jason, work pretty hard. Good job, Jason. And. Hey, sir, that report.
I don't really have anything left to have any question. It's the same. As usual. We control. Our normal rigging our operations and labs and everything. And we had both check valves replaced at the lift station and did a number, cut the hours down on our home quite a bit. They were twenty years old. Uh, we replaced number one rock hump. Ended sale of our fair and went down. It uh, that's been repaired. Attended the training jet cope and new gated systems, the new class. And perform a service on the remote load weight generator. And we replaced the brake parts and the bar pretty. Perfect this. Other than. Very nice stuff that we're trying to do. And many a guy will be in that area when we put. Probably only you guys know what we do. This, but I just replaced the hard grader, replaced them a year ago. And it's one we keep on hand because otherwise you're in there manually breaking out it. So uh, but I'm not going to replace them this time. I'm because it's last one last year. I'm going to bang on it, being done, it's not needed in a year. So it's, it's going off. Yeah, yeah. About the pump, I'm going to wait and see what it's going to offer because they were doing quite a lot of. Oh, yeah, but it's kind of one thing you got to have, but I never. Right, thank you.
Lady council. My congratulations on the fabulous weekend in the community of Nevada. Uh, since council last met, the state of Iowa announced the works for work worth covering tax credit. And so the project now called Nevada Flats did not seek my input, but Nevada Flats. Uh, located at the former, well, still the Stray County Medical Center. And that's what awarded the maximum amount of funding. Was one of the very few million dollar award. That were given out. So we're over a hundred and thirty applications received and a little over fifty funded. So we feel really great about um, the, the number of applications we have funded, especially that one. Which was stand horns on it. So Jordan and I watched the housing numbers a lot of days with frustration. The number's not moving quicker. Like I can't begin to express how important that's with the unit of housing is going to be. Uh, not only this community, but the entire region. So um, right now, uh, we're in an environment where rental housing is just very important. So um, you know, folks are, interest rates are higher than they've been. And uh, being able to have opportunities for rental, I think is going to be important here in the next few years. Well, congratulations. Uh, could have been done without the support of the council and Jordan uh, works with work tirelessly on this project. And you can trust the Cedar Rapids, uh, make sure that we were ready to make a recommendation. So tonight, I'm concerned you all have the Brownville application. So that's the next step. And uh, this will be the first time I've actually done a Brownville application. Thirty years I've been in the great business. Very exciting to learn through that process. So thank you again for your work of that aspect of the project. Tomorrow, we have another key thing happening as it relates to the Nevada flat project. Um, tomorrow, the supervisors will take action on a leadership. You guys talked about a few weeks ago, uh, they'll be actually approving a quick claim deed. Uh, to move that and lay it out of their ownership into the ownership story of every man wants to do. So without that action tomorrow, we don't have. So there were some of you have been very helpful in our conversations with the supervisors to ensure that we are in a position tomorrow. That that will go smoothly. Certainly taking care of uh, your deed restriction on that property from nineteen forty-three. And, and again, I'm anxious again for this project to get going. We'll celebrate as work starts to get uh, happen there. And I'm very interested to meet the developer and the instructor and management. Uh, that's what really big new. Um, excited to meet with the N D C board on Wednesday. We'll talk about some of the things that are going on and get those on their schedules. Uh, the other thing I would add, my Nevada foundation had on the hu-. The human service funding rounding that, that we're offering right now. Uh, to make that fifteen thousand dollars uh, available for those applications on the on credit. With that, are you taking any questions you might have related to economic development?
If things continue as planned, when would Nevada Flats start to kick off?
I, we are hoping both these from construction start on the vacant part of our property. It's open by the end of the year.
Right away.
Okay, yeah. So the hospital is very committed and I think their thought is that they can make that work. That's when you're, when you're purchasing the property for a very low number, you want that commitment started. So um, that's their hope. And I think they're all made every accommodation to make that happen. That's the target. Well, um, I don't have an exact date for sure, but heading into painting, we'll be doing a groundbreaking development facility in some of these members. While I'm getting back from the boat, we'll distribute it and invite and hopefully you'll celebrate with them. Uh, okay. Any other questions? Just to come and thank you, brother. We're not working, making, doing, making, yeah. Yeah, no, it aligned perfectly with strategy, uh, really with what, what the state wants to have. You can drive. You, you, we've all seen that. We've seen those buildings that from nineteen, from eighteen. Things, um, they're nothing but trouble. They are a liability to the school districts, to the communities. And for us to be able to say before it's those revenues are moved, that we have a plan. It really is a pretty delightful. That you can see line, I think she's the one who really uh, bore a lot of the responsibility and the index. And it was just perfect timing for us, the N E D chair, see that we were going. Looking forward to that first screening.
So um, it's already over and it was completely overwhelming in all the best ways. Um, I've got a little stat sheet for you. Uh, our summer program started June fifth and ran to August twelfth. And in those ten weeks, um, we had over ten thousand visits at the library. Uh, we had almost three hundred summer challenge participants, which is the reading component. Um, it's all ages, kids, teens and adults. And there's different prizes for different groups. And the kids, we had all kinds of great donations from the community, businesses like Kirk Town, um, Starbucks, McDonald's. Uh, the pool. And the kids were so excited to win their prize and gather the bond each week. Um, our newest full time employee, Paul, was on the annual duty. Because one of the prizes that you win was to drop off your stuffy at the library. For overnight trip and um, she would get creative and take all kinds of pictures of the things they got to in the library. And the kids love that. It was just. The best part of summer was just seeing the equipment on their faces. Um. We had a hundred and thirty-two queen and teen raffle weekly tickets. So we have three raffle prizes and for every week that they met their goal, they would get a ticket that they could um, put into one of the raffle prizes. And then we have twenty three adult challenges completed. Um, it's hard for us to judge year over year how big of a commitment this is because so many factors change. Last summer, we had a shorter program. It's my first year um, for my staff to do it. And then there, it was longer. Um. But this was definitely felt like way more people at the library regularly. Um, our, our door count of visits to the library really helped that story as for total items borrowed. Uh, and then we had almost two thousand people attending programs. The programs that were the highest attended weren't even at the library. So um, those were at the middle school. And so I would say at least fifteen hundred of those people attending programs weren't attending at the library. So had they been in the library, you wouldn't have had them at the library, but that would have killed our door count even higher. Um, and then we just had so much fun. Um, the last event was touch a truck. Um, the fire department, police department, everybody brought out these great streets. Um. These great vehicles. It was amazing weather. It was very well attended. Uh, I believe we estimated over three hundred and fifty people. Um, over seven hundred dollars worth of lights created given away to lots of families that were very excited to be there. And the, the best story to come out of that day was um, one little boy was going around literally touching every truck. And it just, wow, I touched it, I touched it. So um, the impact was a lot more than just the numbers. Um. A couple other big projects we have going on, we're working on our yearbook digitization. Right now, we raised almost fifteen hundred dollars and we digitize those. And so we've got books from nineteen forty-six to nineteen fifty-three. They're already digitized, were sent off to, you know, works we paid for already, as well as all the Shipley and Milford books. Um, so we're still trying to raise money from the different alumni across the community to um, digitize around the park. And then lastly is the grant we received for accessibility at the library, which is largely likely going into a chairlift for the basement. Uh, we have to host three, or we have to host community conversations, get input from people in the community with mobility disabilities. Um, they say nothing about us without us. There's a big kind of um, motto. And so we'll be hosting three of those conversations in October. Um, at various times, we try to accommodate lots of different people. And we'll be inviting um, people from the community that we know of, who are wheelchair bound or have mobility issues. We'll be talking to the school district as well as um, mainstream living and some other places. or have mobility issues. We'll be talking to the smoking strength as well as, um, mainstream living and some places to try to. Any questions? Thank you.
Several updates for you. Um, attention for basketball for practice with the practice there and bug building. Work should be done tomorrow. Uh, we had a really tough week last week, so I think we wanted to do it last week, but weather was hard out there last week. So that'd be wrapping up tomorrow. We do have that new mountain stalled out there, so for that portion of the complex is, is up and running. We're good for the draft. Disc golf course, tee pads are done, ran, ran and the holes have been ordered and. We'll do that project draft up here near the future as well. Uh, cemetery, the mapping project that we've been working on, we had a meeting with, uh, like Lisco or Green last week. Cert feature is pretty much ready to go. Um, cleaning out some availability, unavailability, um, things with the, with the, uh, program as well, so we hope to be able to roll that stuff out, get a QR code, get that figured out. Um, hopefully here by the end of the year. So that project is looking along. Um, another cemetery project, we're quickly running out of cremation space. I'm gonna call it. So I've sent out information through R and D and we're seeing. We're out there. Um, start that process. It's thirty eight four weeks to get it done. So, um, it'd be well into next year before that project is done, but, um, kind of a few loose ends on that. Uh, field house, um, just quick update on that. Um, sport equipment, the hoops that engaged in the the netting, those things that have been starting to be September eleventh. Uh, the moisture controls, we've checked that everyone content, I'm pretty much spoke, we installed this. The clearing masonry is completely, pretty much all the grates are on site, um, working right now. And, uh, country land page has been there and got the paint wall put in on the next year to secure that sound. So that work is done and, um, we're in that situation quite well, so we'd be happy to. Alright, thanks.
I don't really have much to add. Uh, I don't, wait, I was, I've been brought up a bunch. The tenure has been here, the, the most people in town, but also one quietest law enforcement. So during the weekend, there was one or less, it wasn't the day that we can have it is, everything else went really well. Uh, I went down to the beer garden, waiting me and I didn't see a lot of cars there, but I found it was kind of a small crowd. It looked like there was a lot of usage of the box guy, so. I'll give our shiny use thirty something available. That look, you really did, so. As normal, a couple, um, dirt distances have gone out. Um, we're back to them. Uh, abandoned properties. Uh, I've had great conversations with people that I've reached out to, so, uh, through the property's intent, so we, we order to remodel them and give them back to the user. Uh, I got the, uh, Tuesday with an order and we're working through some options on what's the, 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 down. And hopefully turning out a lot of annual park or, um, having sold as well. Thank you. Any other question, Brandon? Perfect, thank you.
Karen. Karen, um, today was the first day for communication for election. Last day of um, we gathered here, here started the day. Getting them, they want. Um, we've been working through the process for that, our wonder project and the deadlines and how we pull out getting our loans amended for the project, so. Give the finances. Just going on into the year.
Brandon, do you have anything from Major Green?
No, I don't have anything to add unless there's any questions.
Oh, actually, uh, we did get notice from, uh, her about the union reciprocation election, so that will happen in October. And we'll have things that we should talk through. Um, the goals that the council has for the negotiations. That will kick off this fall.
Yeah, my good, great one last thing about the, all the events that we had here and all. All these events will never happen at all the great, but that was a great volunteers that would get survey committees, uh, get their machinery up there, move ground, do whatever it is. They just do to get you the most. Do not see the limelight nor do the well.
No, he's more, so thank you. People would have constructive criticism and to help out, make them better.
I will say one more thing about our event. We have a lot of town leaders, so part of our, you know, hung the flag over the grass. I mean, those guys are awesome. I get it. Saturday, why do you guys aren't really attentive? You know, so other than one small accident, someone, somebody got hurt, us kids, that's a big deal, but yeah, the volunteers are great, fire department, everybody, so it's a lot of compliments on the way to fly with people. For, pretty impressive.
Everywhere this weekend.
Yeah.
There was.
You know.
And that takes people like you.
There's, there's a little story I want to share real quick and shut up, but, uh, and this is actually Emily's story about Mike Sinclair, who ran a car show this year along some, other folks, but um, he, he talked to one of the, the folks at, uh, at Lincoln Highway Days. He said, you know, we really need a good car show. We used to have Lincoln Highway Days. And we said, well, you wanna run it? He said, I, I can do that? Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know what he did? He had a great, ninety cars, they're well organized. Well, we will see it again next year, but that's just the power of the volunteer, you know, you get to do something you're really passionate about, so. So, give it a shot. Another good point. If anyone has good ideas, add them to our event. Anything else? We'll rejoin.
I'll go to a turn.
Jason, all in favor? We are joining everybody.
John, I get a phone note, you guys. Thank you for proving our challenge, Brandon. For holding it.
I'm gonna go.
Yes, we have minutes now.
Yep. I was just calling, I went like down today.